Good evening and welcome to tonight's Telephone Town Hall hosted by the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. I'm Roger, your moderator for tonight's discussion with Commissioners Leslie Dahlkemper, Andy Kerr, and Tracy Craft Tharp, along with County Manager Joe Kirby and several other subject matter experts. We are simulcasting tonight's event in Spanish, and so we welcome those of you listening on that line. Our topics for this evening include the 2025 budget challenges, a look at development and transportation programs, and an update on Together Jeffco. We want to invite you to submit your questions that you might have for county leadership as well. Although tonight's discussion will focus mainly on those three topics, feel free to ask about any county issues that are important to you. You can just listen in, but if you have a question, press star three on your phone, and operator will take down some basic information and you'll be transferred back to the town hall to listen until you're called upon. So press star three now if you already know your question. And again, that same procedure can be used throughout tonight's call. Before we send this over to Commissioner Dahlkemper to kick off tonight's discussion, we want to ask a survey of those people listening tonight. And here is that question. To participate, all you need to do is use your telephone keypad to register your response. It's really easy to participate. And here is that question. "In general, how would you describe the quality of life in Jefferson County?" Press one for very good, press two for good, press three for bad, and press four for very bad. Again, "In general, how do you describe the quality of life in Jefferson County? One for very good, two for good, three for bad, and four for very bad." Please record your vote now, and we'll share the results with you later on tonight's call. And with that, let's turn it over to Commissioner Dahlkemper. Go ahead.
Thank you so much, Roger. I'm Leslie Dahlkemper, and I represent District Three or South Jefferson County, which includes Littleton, Morrison, Conifer, Evergreen, and portions of Lakewood. Welcome to tonight's Telephone Town Hall. Dan Conway, the Jefferson County Strategy and Budget Director, will join us in just a moment. Tonight, we want to discuss the county's 2025 budget process and some of the financial challenges we're working to address. A quick reminder, if you have a question, press star three now on your phone. Mr. Conway, thanks so much for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioner Dahlkemper. On November 14th, the Board of County Commissioners adopted the 2024 budget. With the adoption of the 2024 budget, work on the 2025 budget has already begun. So by starting early, we hope to meet the challenges Jefferson County faces next year end and beyond. As we've been discussing with our community, the county continues to face significant financial challenges. And the county has already made reductions in the general funds to slow the rate of spending and balance the county's budget. These reductions have impacted essential public services such as public safety, roads, and more.
Dan, home values in Jefferson County and across Colorado are skyrocketing, and that's good for homeowners in terms of resale value. However, rising home values also means homeowners are paying more in property taxes. Yet Jefferson County continues to face significant budget challenges. So tell us a little more about why the increase in property taxes, a major source of funding for the county, won't help balance the budget.
So it's important to remember that for every dollar the county collects from property taxes, approximately only 24 cents remain with the county to provide services. The other 76 cents are passed along to public schools, special districts, and cities for their use. The taxpayer dollars the county retains are then used to deliver vital services to the community. But the levels of revenue the county can retain each year are determined by state law. This means the allowed growth of revenue fails to keep pace with the cost of providing county services to our increasing population. This gap between allowed revenue growth and the cost to provide services is the primary factor that shapes the county's continuing financial challenge.
Thanks, Dan. You know, one of the things we rely on a lot as county commissioners is to hear the community's input and their priorities in terms of the budget, and it definitely shapes the decisions that we make as their elected officials. Talk to us a little bit more about how we're gathering community input, and specifically, what are the next steps in the budget process? What do they look like?
The county is currently gathering data, as you mentioned, and public opinion to explore potential solutions to hopefully address these financial challenges, and most importantly, to determine what services matter most to our taxpayers. Now, this information will then be used to develop recommendations for a balanced budget for 2025 and beyond.
Great, thanks, Dan. You know, one of the questions that we've received from some of our constituents is how we're going to go about collecting that information and who's going to collect the information from our community. And of course, we use lots of different strategies to get our community's best thinking on the budget. We have with us tonight County Manager Joe Kirby to talk a little bit more about how we're going to collect community input with the help of a local firm with expertise in this area. We think it's really important to be transparent, of course, about this process, to be accountable. Joe, County Manager Joe Kirby, anything you'd like to add in terms of what that process looks like and how we went about it?
Thank you so much, Commissioner Dahlkemper. Yes, I'd be happy to share how we went about selecting the Big Horn Company as a consultant to help advise the board as we evaluate the county's budget challenges. First, I'd like to point out that the request for proposal was posted and listed using the county's standard process. Twenty-three organizations initially reviewed that RFP, however, only two of them applied. An evaluation panel of county staff, also including myself, reviewed those two applications, conducted interviews, and made their determination on the best candidate by weighing scores from both the applications and the interviews. I would like to emphasize that no elected officials were involved in that process, whether or not be the interviews or the decision-making. That was strictly made by county staff.
Joe, thanks so much. So really, depending on what we learn from the community, the county could choose to put forth a ballot initiative or not to put forth a ballot initiative. And then if we don't put a ballot initiative forward, of course, we would proceed with those budget cuts to the 2025 budget. Thanks so much for the information. We appreciate it. A friendly reminder for all of you who are listening, if you have a question, press star three now on your phone. Mr. Conway, did you have any final thoughts? I know we've talked about a lot of complex challenges, to say the least.
Yes, they are certainly complex, and the conversation with our county leaders, the community, will continue throughout the year as we prepare for the 2025 budget. I do want to take the opportunity to say thank you to the commissioners, the county manager, and everyone who has made the time to sit down and participate in these challenging budget conversations.
Thanks so much. If you have a question, press star three now on your phone. Let's take some time to address questions and concerns from our community. And we'll talk first about some of the questions that we have heard from those of you who are listening in tonight. Who's got our first question? I'll turn it back over to Roger.
All right, let's hear from Laura, who has a question about the trail plan tonight. Go ahead, Laura.
Hello, oh, sorry, hold on. I'm home with my four-year-old. William, hang on one second, I need to talk. Sorry, so my question was about the trail plan, and I know that you still have an update about Together Jeffco coming, but I live in Pleasant View, and I didn't see on the trail plan the new trail on South Table Mountain that was supposed to be part of the Camp George West and Enrol land swap. So I just wanted to make sure that that project was still happening, and if not, like, why it wasn't on the trail plan or if it's getting planned somewhere else.
This is Commissioner Andy Kerr, and thank you for your questions. So yes, things are moving ahead, and I'm going to turn it over to Chris O'Keefe from Planning and Zoning with a few more details here. Chris?
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. Hi, Laura, thanks for that question. This is Chris O'Keefe, I'm the Planning and Zoning Director with Jefferson County. Really, I want to just confirm that the plan is still moving forward. The county is working with Enrol on the land swap, and the connection to the trail on South Table Mountain is part of that plan. I don't really have a timeframe for that right now, but I can assure that we are moving forward with that plan.
Okay, next is Mike. Mike, you've got to have a question, I think, about some proposed cuts. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. In one of the Board of County Commissioners budget sessions in January, all county departments were, I believe, supposed to submit their proposed budget cuts, I think in the neighborhood of 12%. With the exception of the clerk and recorder, DA and treasurer, all of them did submit. The sheriff's proposed cuts appeared to be the most complete presentation. So I have a three-part question here. Where can we find those proposed budget cuts by department? And have county clerk and recorder, DA and treasurer subsequently submitted their budget cut proposals? If not, why not? And then the third part is, I believe there was, there's about $6 million in ARPA funds still available. Will these funds be used to help with budgets in the sheriff's department and the DA's department? Or will they be used for housing, as been suggested by some of the county commissioners, or used to pay for part of the Big Horn $340,000 contract?
Mike, this is Leslie. Thanks so much for the question, the three-part question. We think we got all parts, but if we missed anything, we know you will let us know. We first want to thank all of the county elected officials who were involved in our recent in-depth budget session. It was actually, you know, three days of in-depth conversations, thinking through priorities, looking at essential county services, and looking at where the potential budget shortfall might land. We'll have more firm numbers a little later this spring, but it's also important to mention that no decisions have been made. Let me turn it over to Dan to share a little bit more conversation about some of the specific questions that you had asked about.
Yes, again, my name is Dan Conway. I'm the Director of Strategy and Budget, and we did have a few departments, elected offices, that weren't able to get the information in by the time we were looking at. We are currently working to complete that process for those areas and get that information so it can be considered a part of the overall conversation. In terms of the documents, what I would encourage you to do is visit our website and submit a records request, and we can provide you that document. It's pretty sizable, and that's one of the main reasons we didn't necessarily have it posted on the website, but it's certainly available. So again, I would encourage you to visit our website and submit a open records request, and we'll be happy to provide that information to you. Lastly, the, I think the last aspect, what you were asking about ARPA. We are leveraging the federal ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, in many areas. Sheriff's Office is one of them. And the commissioners continue to evaluate and prioritize the assignment of those dollars almost on a monthly basis. And so if any dollars become available that haven't already been allocated, they'll be revisited with the commissioners to see if there's an opportunity to leverage those dollars.
Great, thanks, Dan, and thanks, Mike, for the question. And just a friendly reminder for those of you who are tuning in tonight, if you have a question, press star three now on your phone.
All right, next we have Greg, who has a question about road maintenance. Greg, go ahead.
Yeah, I live in Columbine Knoll South Two, and almost every intersection has potholes in it. I know in the past, I worked at the county for about 26 years, and I know in the past they have spent a lot of money on bike lanes, and they used to spend it on patching holes, stuff like that, paving roads. Is that going to be something you guys look at, rather than lanes for people that, you know, are a small percentage of the people that pay the taxes?
Thank you for your question. My name is Avell Montoya. I'm the Director of Development and Transportation for Jefferson County. We do understand that there are significant needs in our road system. In fact, we've analyzed that road system from across the county, and we do have an inventory of needs. Those needs approach $630 million across the county for improvements. And further, we've broken that down a little bit more. We have about $420 million of needs for pavement-related items such as you're discussing, like new roads or potholes and repairs. And then there's also $210 million that are associated with drainage. And that $630 million list is currently unfunded, so we are trying to find ways to enhance the revenue stream to possibly pay for those projects over time. We also do prioritize those projects to look at the most critical needs, and we know right now there's approximately $70 million of critical needs throughout the county. And those are either roads or bridges or systems that are failing or about to fail, which we are planning to tackle first. Later on in this presentation, I'll share that the Road and Bridge Fund has about a $54 million budget, and that we are using those funds to do things as you described. Thank you.
Great, thanks so much, Avell, and thanks for that great question. We want to thank you so much for your questions and your feedback, and before we jump to our next topic, it is time for another survey question. I'm going to turn it back over to Roger.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Here's question two. Again, it's very easy to participate. All you have to do is use your telephone keypad to enter your response. Do you think the quality of life in Jefferson County is likely to improve, stay about the same, or decline during the next five years? Press one for improve, press two for stay about the same, and press three for decline. Again, do you think the quality of life in Jefferson County is going to get better or get worse? Press one for improve, press two for stay about the same, or press three for decline. Record your vote now on your phone, and we'll have one more question later in tonight's discussion, so please hang on. Now, let's go to Commissioner Kerr to start our next topic.
Thank you, Roger. I'm Andy Kerr. I represent District Two, the central part of Jefferson County, including Wheat Ridge, parts of Lakewood, Golden, and parts of the foothills. So when we talk about the critical transportation and infrastructure needs the county has, those issues are managed by our Department of Development and Transportation. And who better to learn about those services than Department Director Avell Montoya, who we just heard from a moment ago? But Avell, thank you for joining us tonight. So many people are aware of services like snow plowing and road repairs, but there's a lot more your department is responsible for. Can you give us an overview of what's going on in the world of development and transportation right now?
Thank you, Commissioner Kerr. The Department of Development and Transportation is comprised of four different divisions. We have Building Safety, Transportation and Engineering, Road and Bridge, and Planning and Zoning. The Planning and Zoning team had approximately 70,000 contacts in 2023 and about 2,200 zoning enforcement inquiries. We also had 384 development review cases, and we're also starting a project that we're working on now called Together Jeffco, which is going to be updating our plans and regulations. Also briefly, our Building Safety Division had approximately 22,000 building permit applications, and over 10,000 roofing permits were also issued in 2023. Now, in regard to our Road and Bridge Division, in 2023, we overlaid 151 lane miles of road, of which 48 lane miles were completed utilizing ARPA dollars. We also replaced 35,000 square yards of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and stamped concrete throughout Jefferson County, and we replaced 27 minor drainage structures and low-flow culverts. Additionally, Road and Bridge brought 381 curb ramps into ADA compliance.
Great, thank you so much, Avell. And just a reminder, if you'd like to ask a question, please press star three on your phone. So we want to discuss transportation and infrastructure tonight because it's one of the issues our community is most passionate about. And strengthening our transportation and infrastructure is key to moving both the county and the community toward its intended vision. However, the budget constraints we've been talking about and funding challenges make it difficult for that vision to become a reality.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our budget for 2024 for Road and Bridge is approximately $52 million, of which approximately $14 million come from the Road and Bridge mill levy from property taxes. At this point, our Department of Development and Transportation is facing a backlog of unfunded projects totaling $500 million, which has recently risen to $630 million due to cost increases in materials and fuel. As you can see, that mill levy isn't keeping pace with all the projects that need to be addressed. In 2024, Road and Bridge is focusing on maintaining a pavement condition index of greater than 64 and overlaying 169 lane miles of road surface, of which 78 lane miles will be paid for with ARPA funds. We plan on replacing 30,000 square yards of curb, gutter, sidewalk, and stamped concrete, as well as bringing an additional 250 existing curb ramps into ADA compliance. We will also replace 21 minor drainage structures and low-flow culverts. If you do want to navigate to learn more and see an interactive map, I would encourage you to go to jeffco.us and navigate to our Transportation and Engineering page to do so. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that information, Avell. And again, if you have a question, please press star three now on your phone. And let's take some time to address questions and concerns from the Jeffco community. So I will be turning it back over to Roger, and I believe we have some questions ready to go.
We do, and again, as the commissioners have said, press star three to get in line and ask your question. We are going next to Janine. You have a question about population and change over the last 42 years. Go ahead.
Yes, it's nice to have the amenities finally, but it took them 20 years to build a park that we were promised when we moved in. And then, and since it's been 20 years since then, and no improvements to the park have been made, but I mean, it's maintained, I don't mean that. But a lot of the things that we were promised, like in our drainage system, you know, the culverts that drain the excess water from the streets, are so overgrown that it's dangerous for the kids to be, and kids will go down there, you know that. And so I was wondering, who maintains the cement culverts that drain water goes through, and why isn't it maintained better?
Hey, Roger, this is Tracy, and I am a county commissioner. And cement culverts are important, and I've got an expert here. He's got his headphones on. Mike, can you talk a little bit about the cement culverts and what's happening with that?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the question. I apologize.
Hey, Janine, would you just say that question real quick? You were wondering about the cement culverts.
Oh, yes, we have a lot of cement culverts around our place, which is great. Don't get me wrong, I'm not complaining about the drainage at all, but they are getting so overgrown with plant life and even trees, and it doesn't seem like anybody, well, excuse me, gives a damn about keeping them free so that if there is a major storm or is a major flooding, which I'm on a hill, so I'm not too worried about that, but it all drains in down to these culverts at the park. And, you know, plant life is just, is beautiful, but it's also very dangerous, and I wonder why they're not maintained more.
So, Janine, can you tell me what area that you live in?
I live in, well, let's see, 112th Avenue is behind me, 112 places in front of me.
Okay, yep, I know exactly where you are. So we can actually get up there and take a look at that and take a look at the growth? And you're talking about the growth on top of the culverts that are, of course, aren't in the road network, correct? They're off the road surface?
Oh, no, they're not involving the traffic or the bicycle path. But I worry about, I know this is stupid, but moving to Colorado, but there's been numerous reports of snakes and...
Janine, can I just give you my phone number, and then you can give me a call, and we can discuss it further?
Uh, just a minute, I'm in the other room, and I don't have a pencil with me, and I'm 85 years old.
Give me your number, Janine, and I'll call you.
Okay, 303...
Oh, sorry. Nope, not online, not online, sorry. Oh, we have your phone number. We have your phone number, so I will give you a call.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye. Thanks, Janine. So Mike not only gives a damn, but he's going to be able to help you, okay? And everybody else, if you want Mike to help you, call star three, Roger?
Let's go next to Diane. And by the way, we want to get to as many questions as we can. So at the same time, we're going to try and combine similar questions to avoid duplication. So Diane, there may be another person down the line that has a similar question to what Diane is about to ask. And you may not get called live, but hopefully your answer will be, your question will be answered. So let's hear from Diane next about short-term rental policy.
Hello, my question is, when are we going to be seeing the draft of the short-term rental policy? It's been about three years since they first started this process, and we still haven't seen a draft.
Hi, Diane. Thank you for that question. This is Chris O'Keefe. I'm the Planning and Zoning Director here with Jefferson County, and I'm glad you asked. It's a question a lot of people have. You know, we're contracting with a third-party company to assist with compliance and monitoring of short-term rentals. The contract is mostly complete, which is good news. That means we're moving forward. And once this contract is executed, we're asking this company to compile data about existing short-term rentals. We think there are about 1,000 short-term rentals already operating in the county. But once we get that feedback and we, and together with the feedback that we've received in several community meetings that we've already held, we're going to be able to craft those regulations and release them to the public. We expect that that's going to happen sometime early this summer.
All right, thank you. Let's hear next from Greg. Greg, go ahead.
Hi, it's my second question. I was wondering, you know, it's impressive with all the lane miles of paving, but in road construction, the failure for roads is usually underneath at the subgrade level where it is either clay, bentonite, or water, problems like that. And the county just pretty much mills and paves. They used to actually dig those problem areas out and redo them, but it seems like they've gone to just milling and paving everywhere. And with all the lane miles, how many of those lane miles are going to hold up and have to be redone?
So Greg, this is Mike Sicari. I'm the Road and Bridge Director for Jefferson County. So, yeah, you're right, we do have a couple of mills. We do typically, when we're going to pave in an area where there's curb and gutter, if the subbase is in decent shape and it's structurally sound, we mill off the top two inches and then just put two inches back on. But I don't know if you've seen our operation. Recently, we just did a bunch of work in Bear Creek Village, and we actually mill off the asphalt and then had to go down and dig out a lot of the clay, and then deep-strengthen it back with asphalt. Then we came back and milled two inches off and then put the final cap on. So we do remove a lot of that clay when we can. You know, as you know, some of the roads are, there's a lot of clay, particularly in South Jeffco, so that's a continuous battle for us. And quite honestly, we spend about probably 70% of our asphalt budget down in South Jeffco for those reasons, because of the failures that you're talking about. Does that answer your question?
All right, thank you. Let's go next to Lynn. And Lynn, I've got a question about taxes. Go right ahead.
You were saying earlier that you're spending $350,000... You were saying earlier that you're spending three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to come up with some ideas to raise our taxes, when the voters turned down proposals to increase tax or got rid of Tabor the last election. In previous elections, the tax increase has always been turned down, but now you're still proceeding on and spending three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to find ways to raise our taxes. And how can you find that to be legit when the voters seem to always turn down a tax increase?
Lynn, this is Leslie. Thanks so much for your question. I really appreciate it. You know, one of the things we value so much in Jefferson County is our quality of life. And a big part of that quality of life, which makes Jeffco such a great place to work, play, retire, raise children, and more, is the great county services that are provided, from Jeffco Open Space to our libraries. We've been talking a lot tonight about roads, culverts, and potholes, and helping people get to where they want to go, and much more. The county has an ongoing budget shortfall that it has to address in 2025. And one of the things that is important to us throughout this process is hearing from people like you, from community members, to find out what are your top priorities in terms of county funding and how those dollars are allocated. We also work very closely with our staff and our county electeds as well. The Bighorn Group that you mentioned, the firm, is helping the county understand possible options for addressing that shortfall. Also, a critical part of their work is better understanding the community's concerns, questions, just as we're doing on tonight's phone call. So we'll take all that information into consideration and then share more with you in terms of next steps in future town halls, just like this one.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let's go to Mindy next with a question about the environmental impact of growth. Go ahead.
Hello, Mindy. You may be muted. All right, we're going to move on. Suzanne, you could put her back in the queue, that'd be great. Let's go to Joe with some questions about jurisdictions in the city and the counties. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I'm fairly new to the area. I live in Arvada. And so, yeah, you know, there's so many little cities, Golden, Wheat Ridge, Lakewood, all the, and so I don't, is there a short answer to, I know the education is Jefferson County, the school system. Is there a short answer as to how the jurisdiction is? Who has authority within the city limits?
Andy, I think, is that you? No, that's Joe Kirby. Go ahead, Joe.
Yes, thank you, Joe. Thanks for your question this evening. My name is Joe, and my last name is Kirby, and I'm the county manager for Jefferson County. The short answer is that the cities are responsible for the services within their jurisdiction, within their city limits, and the county in general is responsible for the unincorporated areas. I would like to give you a couple of examples of how we work closely together between the cities and the county. For example, we partner and coordinate on snow plowing. We work together regarding road maintenance. We work together on parks and open space. And also, one that's near and dear to most people's hearts within our community is in the area of housing and homelessness. As a matter of fact, I meet several times a month with all of the city managers together. Earlier today, we just met to focus on a funding agreement for animal sheltering services. And just last week, we met to discuss the ongoing challenge regarding homelessness within our community, as well as developing future affordable housing. Hopefully, that gives you an idea. Also, another, I would end my comments on the, for example, the county provides the jail for all of the jurisdictions within Jefferson County, and all of the cities transport their inmates to our jail, and we provide that service. So hopefully, that gives you a couple of ideas about how we work together.
Thank you. Commissioner Kirby, before we take the next question, Joe also mentioned that the schools were under the county. Do you want to clarify that?
Oh, thanks, Roger. If I heard Joe correctly, she said that she understood that the schools were not under...
I thought she said she might have said that they were.
But just for everyone's clarification, Jefferson County School District, while we share borders, the exact same borders with Jefferson County, Jefferson County School District is a separate entity than the county.
Hey, Roger, if you want to learn more about this, I just happen to be doing a town meeting on Saturday with Lawrence Simpson, the mayor of Arvada, Sarah Numella, the mayor pro temp of Westminster, and this happens to be our topic of conversation, that what the heck does a mayor do? What's the difference between Arvada and the county? What does a mayor pro temp do? And commissioner, commissioner of what? So it really is one of those one-on-one kind of conversations, so would really encourage you to join us. That's this Saturday, it's virtual, from nine-thirty to eleven, and you can get that link on my Facebook page at Tracy for Jeffco. So Joe, I'll be looking for you and hope that you can join us. Thanks. And star three, Roger?
Ask a question.
For more questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mindy is back with a question on the environment and impact of growth. Go ahead, Mindy.
Hello, I am calling and wondering about the environmental impact with all of the growth. I am a Golden native, native to Colorado, grew up in Golden, now I live in the Old Town, Arvada area. And my heart just breaks every day with the constant exponential growth and redevelopment of any and all vacant land, like almost as quickly as possible. And I just wonder, because now we're turning this into, from Colorado that we all love, it's almost turning into like a little LA. The pollution is insane. When I was little, the pollution was out in Denver. Now the pollution is here in Arvada and goes all the way to Golden. Some days, we know that because of our unique design with the mountains, that pollution stays here a little bit more because we're in a bowl. And I think that the, you know, electric car stuff, we all know that that's very debatable at best because of all of the damage with the lithium batteries and the mining and all of that. But everywhere I go, trees are just being cut down everywhere. And it's just, even if we were to replant them, we're never going to get that growth back in even my lifetime, and I'm not very old yet. And so it's like, it's kind of just heartbreaking, and I wonder, at what point do we say, hey, we all live in Colorado because we love it? And at what point are we selling, like essentially, kind of our souls, and we're doing irreversible environmental damage that's having impact that's going to last generations and generations to come? We're in arid climate because of this devastation?
Great, thank you, Mindy. Thank you, Mindy, for your question. I think I have the gist of it. This is Andy Kerr, Commissioner again. And yes, I think definitely one of the things we're all very concerned about, and certainly something that we need to look at. We do know that growth will happen, and so we need to, we need to plan in the smartest way possible. And of course, you've heard from Chris O'Keefe, our Director of Planning and Zoning, and so we work closely with planning and zoning to make sure that we are taking all of this into account. And as well, a couple of years ago, the commissioners approved a climate action plan, which all growth, all planning, all zoning has to take into account our climate action plan. And this climate action plan is designed to help guide any growth that does happen as smartly as possible. So you're right, we can never, we can never turn back the clock, but what we can do is look forward and do the best job we can planning moving forward.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Let's hear from Wayne next. Wayne, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Loud and clear, go ahead.
So now that my taxes went up forty-one percent, I'm kind of, and Biden opened up the borders, I'm kind of, and Aurora says, don't drop your migrants off in the middle of the night. I'm kind of wondering, what is going on in Jefferson County as far as that concerned? And am I paying for migrant housing? Or what is the financial impact to me for this disaster?
Wayne, thanks so much for your question. This is Leslie. I'm going to turn it over to our Human Services Director, Mary Berg, in just a moment. One of the things that we take a lot of pride in Jefferson County and across our municipalities is that we're an inclusive, diverse community. And a number of us were at the Action Center, in fact, a little bit earlier today, and working with our faith-based community. Where fifty thousand pounds of food was about to be distributed to food pantries across the community. And it really underscores what Jefferson County is all about, and that is the heart of this community coming together to help those in need. Your question specifically, I think I'm going to turn over to Mary Berg with our Human Services Department, so perhaps she can clear up some more specific responses for you. But know that our nonprofits are hard at work, and they're doing some great things across our community for everyone who's in need at this time. Mary?
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you for the question. I know that this is one that is impacting our community and is very complex. Many of the newcomers that have come to the city of Denver are currently not eligible for the public assistance programs that we administer through the Human Services Department, such as food assistance or Medicaid. So as Commissioner Dalcomber said, most of our nonprofits serve a variety of our community, and they're serving anyone who really comes to their doorstep seeking assistance. So right now, we partner with our community in different ways, because it really is a struggle when people are hungry and they need food. But that's what I can share in terms of the programs that we administer through our Human Services Department. And I do want to clarify on a prior question, that the Human Services Department provides those public assistance programs, the child and adult protection programs, across all the cities in our county as well. So we have one Human Services Department that serves all of Jefferson County. So thank you for that question.
Great. Well, thanks again for all the great questions and feedback, and to Vel Montoya for joining us tonight. Before we move on to our next topic, let's take another survey question.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Again, it's easy to register your vote, just use your telephone keypad. Here's the question. How would you rate your sense of personal safety here in Jefferson County? Press one for very safe, press two for somewhat safe, press three for neither safe nor unsafe, kind of neutral, press four for somewhat unsafe, and press five for very unsafe. Again, how do you rate your sense of security, personal security here in Jefferson County? One for very safe, two for somewhat safe, three for neither, four for somewhat unsafe, and five for very unsafe. We appreciate you participating in all of our survey questions tonight. And for our final topic, let's turn it over to Commissioner Craftarp.
Thank you, Roger. I'm Tracy Craftarp, and I represent District One, which is the north area of the county. That would include Arvada, a little bit of Golden, Wheat Ridge, and Westminster. And joining me for this segment of our Telephone Town Hall is another member of our Department of Development and Transportation, Chris O'Keefe, Planning and Zoning Director for Jefferson County's Planning and Zoning Division, both of who we have heard from a little bit earlier. And we'll be discussing how the exciting, On Going Together Jeffco plans and regulations update will shape the future landscape of our county, moving well into our future. Chris, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioner Craftarp. Together Jeffco is a two-year project with the goal of designing land use, planning for wildfire evacuation, creating transportation policies that are aligned and provide that cohesive vision for the future of Jefferson County, while identifying priorities for addressing wildfire, growth, transportation, future land uses, and land use regulations across all of unincorporated Jeffco. This comprehensive project tackles updates to our comprehensive plan, to the transportation plan, to our community wildfire protection plan, the evacuation annex of our all-hazard mitigation plan, and utilizing all those updates, it's going to create a unified land use code that covers all of those aspects. Together Jeffco is founded on community participation. Recently, we held three community meetings, one at Evergreen High School, one in Golden Gate Canyon, and one here at the Government Center. Two more meetings are planned for April second in the Northern Plains and April third at Chatfield High School. Please check TogetherJeffco.com for final locations and times of those meetings. We had approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five people at the first three meetings and received tremendous feedback about your vision for the future of the county. A few of those ideas include preserving the thirty-five acre zoning in Golden Gate Canyon, more consideration for equestrian uses when creating new roads and trailway connections, recognizing mobile home parks as a viable, affordable housing solution. We should consider lowering speed limits at night on roads where wildlife frequent. We should concentrate residential density in activity centers, and we should continue to coordinate with emergency management to plan for orderly evacuations for natural disasters like wildfires. We encourage everyone listening to help us plan for the future of our county by sharing your vision. Please visit TogetherJeffco.com for information, updates, and to take our surveys.
Hey, thanks for that information, Chris. That's really a very exciting and important initiative that's happening in Together Jeffco, and I hope everyone participates. Remember, if you have a question, press star three on your phone. And Roger, can we take some time now to address some questions and concerns from our Jeffco community?
We sure can. Let me also repeat that website, TogetherJeffco.com, TogetherJeffco.com. Our next question is from Natalie. You have some questions about budget expenditures. Go right ahead.
Yes, good evening, thank you. I wanted to go back to the topic of the voters and the tax increase. The voters here in Jeffco have said no twice within the last five years to a tax increase, and said no to giving up our, the revenue limits. So we've kept a cap on our property taxes because of that. But the commissioners don't seem to have heard the voters' voice, and last, late last year, approved a contract with a political operative, the Bighorn Company, to the tune of three-hundred-and-forty thousand dollars of our public money. The contract itself is, besides being inappropriate, it's our taxpayer money that's going to a political operative to pave the way for a tax increase when we said no. This political operative has donated to all three of the county commissioners. The county commissioners are having, in October as an example, a closed-door executive session meeting about our taxpayers' bill of rights and the limits on our taxes. A closed-door meeting. So, one, how can the commissioners claim to have transparency and an appropriate contract when the voters are not being heard? Our money's being spent with a political operative who happens to be married to our local Congresswoman. You've taken donations, political campaign donations...
Natalie, thank you, thank you so much. We appreciate the question about transparency and accountability, and that's exactly why Jefferson County has an airtight procurement process to address these issues. And I don't know if you heard some of the questions that came up that were very similar to yours a little bit earlier in the conversation, but the RFP was posted, it was listed using the county standard process. Twenty-three organizations pulled that RFP, and two of them applied. There was an evaluation panel that was made up of county staff, no elected officials, reviewed those two applications, conducted interviews, made their determination on the best candidate by weighing scores from both the applications and the interviews. And you may have heard some of our earlier comments, too, about the major budget shortfall we're facing in the next year, some of the reasons behind that shortfall, and would welcome a conversation if you'd like to talk more about that. Thanks again for raising those concerns and also for your question tonight.
All right, let's go to Dawn next about a zoning question. Go ahead.
Well, thank you. I want to follow on with Commissioner Kerr's comment about growth is going to happen. My comment is around mobile home park zoning, and my concern that at the Together Jeffco meetings, the future zoning for the mobile home parks looks to be residential, and that's not enough protection to maintain the already embedded energy in those... those communities, the people that are there, and the affordability. So I'd really like to encourage to Chris O'Keefe that mobile home zoning designation remain in the Together Jeffco plan going forward. That residential alone is insufficient. That's just a way to tell developers, here's a place that you can redevelop. There are models in Boulder, in Sansui, I can't remember the pronunciation, where they basically have protected the residents and are doing development to their benefit. So they're getting them out of 1950s-era houses into better houses. There are models out there of doing the protection and the development, but our current proposal doesn't provide those protections. So, thank you.
Dawn, thank you for that question. This is Chris O'Keefe, Planning and Zoning Director. First and foremost, you know, we recognize that affordable housing is one of the major problems that we're trying to tackle, and mobile homes are one way that we can address that problem. You bring a good point up about our land classification, and perhaps a broad residential classification is too general. But I can tell you this, we do recognize the importance of preserving our mobile home communities and making sure there are opportunities to... for mobile homes to be part of this solution to our affordable housing problem.
Okay, Alice is next with a question about a sidewalk, it looks like. Go ahead, Alice.
Yes, thank you. I am not able to drive, but I can walk, and I would love to be able to walk from Kipling to Ward on 58th Avenue, because I can go to the doctor, and then I can also go to church. I believe several years ago, we voted, and I think the plan was to have a sidewalk, but I was wondering if and when it was going to be built. Thank you.
Hi, Alice. Thank you for that question. My name is Evan Brown. I'm our engineering manager for Transportation and Engineering. This section, 58th Avenue, between Kipling and Ward, is actually located in the city of Arvada. I have your contact info here. I can give you a call after this meeting and get in contact with someone from the city of Arvada to answer that question exactly. We also had a similar question from Chuck calling about ramps being replaced in the city of Arvada. I can also reach out to you, Chuck, with your contact info, and give you an update on their ramp replacement and sidewalk replacements within the city limits. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to hear from Susan about noise on the weekends and cars. Go Go ahead, Susan. You're live with our audience.
Oh, hello. Yeah, my name is Susan. I live near Southwest Plaza, and about 2019, we started hearing a lot of car noise. And it was just terrible. It would start around 10 o'clock at night and end about 1 o'clock. And this is almost every Saturday night. When the weather wasn't bad, they wouldn't come out. I've done some research on it. Right now, the organization is called Simple Lifestyle Car Club, and they come around to different areas all over, you know, Greeley and whatever. When it's our turn, though, we're in misery. And I'm just wondering if you know about this, if anything could be done about it?
Yes.
I've contacted Brittany Pedersen, our representative for the 7th district, and she supposedly has allocated some money so that the districts, the different areas can communicate. So I was just wondering if you knew anything about this problem.
Yes, you bet. Susan, this is Leslie, and I would like to ask a favor. Would you please email us at commish@jeffco.us? I'd like to put you in touch with one of our leaders at the Jeffco Sheriff's Office who has been working on this issue. The concerns you're raising are concerns I've heard from other constituents in South Jeffco, and the Jeffco Sheriff's Office has been working hard, and actually, they're part of a metro area task force that is collectively trying to address this issue, because as you know, it easily moves from one area to the next area to yet a third or fourth area. So we can connect you with the right folks and talk in more depth about the strategies the Sheriff's Office has in place to tackle this issue. I really appreciate you bringing that up tonight. Thanks so much.
Okay, we'll go to Debbie next for a question on taxes.
Excuse me, hello?
Go ahead, Debbie.
Hello. My question is about tax revenue. Why isn't there a net-net effect as far as all of the people, the growth, everyone's moving here and buying homes and paying property taxes and sales tax and all of that type of stuff? And so, why doesn't the amounts cover what they are causing, like more roads to be built because there are developments? You know, and now they're on, driving more on the streets, and so why isn't there enough money from all of the new growth people?
Hey, Debbie, this is Tracy. I'm so glad you asked this question. We've been waiting for it all night long, but I knew you would come on and that you would ask it. So this is such a common sense question that I hear from so many people. I live in a house right now that I never would have believed was... had the valuation that it does. I never, ever would have guessed I would have been able to live in such an expensive house, because housing prices have gone up over the last couple of years. The problem when you live in a house that's worth $800,000, a million, a million-five, those property taxes also go up, and that's part of what's happened. I'm going to let Dan talk about the details of this, but first of all, what I want to tell you is, last year, the county received $42 million more because of the property taxes that increased. $42 million. And you're right. Why isn't Chris O'Keefe or Valmontoya or all these road guys, why aren't they fixing our roads? Well, Dan will talk about this a little bit, but we had to return $39.4 million of that $42 million because of... Can you guess what I'm going to say?
[inaudible]
Yep, it's Tabor. And we only have a couple of minutes left of this town meeting, but that's enough time for you, Dan. Go for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Craftarp. Again, this is Dan Conway, the Director of Strategy and Budget. And so, Tabor is obviously a very complicated subject, but one of the things that Tabor establishes is a limit on the growth of revenue from one year to the next. And one of the factors that feed into the calculation is the inflation rate. And so, obviously, it looks at what the values of the market is, and it drives up those abilities for that revenue to grow. The other factor that comes into play is a change in the value of net construction in the county. And this is very different than what you see at the state level. So the state's Tabor limit is calculated by inflation and the change in population, whereas at the county and our special districts, it's again calculated with the rate of inflation and the change in net value of property. That obviously does not keep pace with the change in population. So there is a disconnect with the growth of population on our local resources. The third one I wanted to mention too is that there's a distinction with the schools. They have... Their Tabor limit can grow by the value of inflation plus the change in student enrollment. So all three levels have a different factor, and unfortunately, with the level of population we have in the county, it's difficult for that revenue limit to maintain and keep pace with the demands of those services stemming from that population.
Thanks, Dan. Hey, he has a second career of going out and talking to different groups, and he's not expensive, so contact him, and he'll come out, and he can go through all of that Tabor stuff for you. Again, hey, everybody, thanks so much for all your great questions and feedback. Chris O'Keefe, special thank you to you for being here with us today and talking about Together Jeffco. Planning and zoning, they want to hear from you. They are currently working on updating our county's short-term rental regulations. Exciting topic, lots of work there, but it only works if we hear from you. For more information, please visit www.jeffco.us/2613/regulations-updates. Or heck with that. Just go to jeffco.us, the website, and you can find us.
Search.
And do search. And you could either search for planning, short-term regulations, planning and zoning, or Chris O'Keefe. Thank you. Who are we tossing this to? Roger?
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think it's easiest to go to Jeffco's website and just use the search function. It works great. I can attest to it. We just have a couple minutes left. Commissioner Dalcomper, will you kick us off for some closing remarks?
You bet. Thanks so much, Roger. And thanks to everyone who joined us for tonight's Telephone Town Hall. Your input is very important to us, and we always encourage you to participate in the discussion whenever your calendar allows. Thanks so much for taking the time tonight to be here. I'd also like to mention a recording of tonight's town hall, along with the questions and answers from the discussion, will be posted on our town hall site. In addition, if you'd like more information about tonight's conversation and the topics we discussed, please visit our website at www.jeffco.us/townhall. Commissioner Craftarp, any closing thoughts?
Hey, this has been a lot of fun. We'll see you next quarter. Thanks, everyone, for your questions.
And Commissioner Kerr?
Great. Thanks again to everyone for joining us tonight. And also, I'd like to remind you that if we didn't get to your question or comment, please leave us a voice message. And at the end of our call tonight, you will hear a recorded message. Then you can leave your comment or question after the tone, and someone from the team will get back to you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioners. Again, if we didn't get to your question or comment, leave a message at the end of the call. Just stay on the line. And to find a recording of tonight's conversation and the topics discussed, visit www.jeffco.us/townhall. On behalf of your Commissioners and all the hard-working staff that joined us this evening, thank you very much, and have a good evening.